I'm going to call the St. Clair Shores April 21st, 2025. Meeting to order. Abby, please call the roll.
Mayor Walby?
Here.
Councilmember Burgess?
Here.
Councilmember Karen?
Here.
Councilmember Frederick?
Present.
Councilmember Rubelo?
Present.
Councilmember Rusi?
Here.
And Councilmember Vitale?
Here.
The quorum is present.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item two is proclamations and presentations, and we have a, we actually have two. We've got an A and B today, so even though B's not on here, we'll, we've got a short presentation from the state rep, so we'll have her come up second, but we'll start off with Harper Chiropractic Center proclamation. Dr. Hamilton, come on up.
How are you?
I'm great.
Good. Congratulations. Yes, let's get right in the middle, and we'll, I don't know if you want to do one on each side, or, okay. All right. Doctor, you stand right here.
This is Dr. Sarah, my daughter.
Yep, yep. Okay. So I want to read the proclamation. Congratulations. Let me read the proclamation, and then I'm going to have you say a few words. How's that? Okay. Proclamation to Harper Chiropractic Center 40th anniversary. Where as the mayor and council of the city of St. Clair Shores deem it fitting and proper to publicly recognize and express our pride and appreciation to the Harper Chiropractic Center on the occasion of celebrating 40 years as an essential part of our community. The Harper Chiropractic Center located at 27889 Harper Avenue was founded by Dr. Kenneth Hamilton, BS in DC, in April 1985 after he graduated from Life Chiropractic College and an internship in Dearborn Heights, Michigan. Dr. Hamilton, along with his daughter Sarah, who joined the practice in 2016, believed that good health is determined by a healthy nervous system and provide chiropractic care for the whole family at the Harper Chiropractic Center. Dr. Hamilton takes tremendous pride in practicing in St. Clair Shores and finds joy in helping the patients at the Harper Chiropractic Center live a happier and healthier lifestyle. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and council of the city of St. Clair Shores, on behalf of all its citizens, extend our congratulations and best wishes to the Harper Chiropractic Center for their dedication in serving this community on the occasion of celebrating their 40th anniversary and wish them many more years of its continued success. Congratulations.
Wow, thank you very much.
We'd just like to say thank you to the good people at the St. Clair Shores. It's been a great place to work. My wife actually grew up here, so it's a long history of the family being here. We're happy to be here, proud to be here. Now my grandkids are here. Thank you very much. Jarrett's working on the historic commission, so that's good. My son-in-law, Dr. Sarah, is helping to run the practice. It's beautiful. It's a great place to work. Very excited to be here, and I look forward to meeting with all of you in another 10 years for our 50th.
Fantastic. And we want to thank you. I know you've always been a donor to the parade, and we appreciate that. Without people like you, we wouldn't have events like that. So it, they have good, strong cities. You've got to have a good business community. So we really appreciate that. Thank you for all you've done.
Happy to be a part of it, really. It's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Congratulations. What happened to her?
Skiing.
Skiing, okay.
Rental skis.
Oh, yeah, I know that feeling. And then item 2B, the state rep from 13th district, right? Is that what it is? Maya Zong, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. Thank you for coming. I know you wanted to say a few words, so please.
Thank you so much, Mayor Walby, and members of the city council. It's a pleasure to be here. I want to thank you for giving me a few minutes of your busy schedule to allow me to give you an update from Lansing. First thing, I think the last time I was here, back in February, talked a little bit about the minimum wage and the earned sick time going up, and the governor did indeed sign into law minimum wage increase and earned sick time for workers, and those, those two pieces of legislation were supported by both Republicans and Democrats, and businesses as well, too, which are, you know, as you know, very much impacted by those changes. As a member of the Families and Veterans Committee, we've heard testimony from the DMVA, the Department of Military and Veterans, about the importance of healthcare and dental care for military service members and our veterans. And so with that, I want to share with you all that we will be hosting a Veterans Resource Fair on Monday, May 12th, from 6:30 to 8:30 at the VFW Bruce Post, right here in St. Clair Shores. It's open to all veterans in Macomb County. We will have officials from the State Department, as well as the county, providing services for our veterans, as well as nonprofit organizations that are serving the veterans community. We know how important our veterans are in having dedicated their life to serving our country, and given some uncertainty with federal funding and just things that you may have heard, we want to make sure that we are present for our veterans and that we can connect them to the resources that they need. Oftentimes, when military service members are discharged, they're, they're just discharged, and, and then they have to seek out resources. And so this will be a great opportunity for our veterans to be connected to the resources that they, they so deserve. I have some flyers here. I'll make sure that I leave them with all of you so that you can share it with the veterans community. But here, happy to answer any questions that you all may have. Last time I was here, I saw the presentation about the library and a shortage of the funds, and so as part of the budgetary process, I will be putting in an appropriation request of $500,000 for the budget fiscal year 2026. Nothing is guaranteed until the governor signs it, but wanted to let you guys know that I am certainly advocating to ensure that funding comes back to St. Clair Shores, and the library is a very important piece of that because it does serve the greater community. So that is something that I plan on advocating for and will do my best to ensure that that is included in the budget. I've also been working on a bipartisan work group with Macomb and Oakland, Oakland representatives to ensure that the discharges that are coming out of the Oakland County basin into Lake St. Clair are cleaned up. Oakland County is going through a permitting process right now with Eagle, and we want to make sure that that permitting also includes that they clean up their water before it's discharged back into our waterways. We've seen unprecedented rainfall, and so this is going to continue to be an ongoing issue, but wanted to let you guys all know that we are working together to ensure that we keep our lakes and rivers clean.
Well, first off, thank you. Two very important items for St. Clair Shores, right? I mean, obviously, we're on the water, but to, to do something and help with Oakland County, you know, Public Works Commissioner Candace Miller has been on the forefront of leading this charge and trying to have Oakland County do more work on that. So I really appreciate you working on that. And of course, we'd be eternally grateful for the, if, even if it's not 500,000, and that's what we're short, anything would help out, so that would be great. It's a great project at the library. We've done a lot of due diligence, and in this time, it's kind of come a little, as you know, is the meeting a little higher than we had anticipated, and we're trying not to cut back. We want to put all those services in there for the community, so we would really appreciate that. So thank you so much for working on those two projects. They're, they're important for St. Clair Shores.
Absolutely. Thank you. And Macomb County has always been at the forefront when it comes to clean air and water. Unfortunately, other counties, they do the bare minimum. And so I can say, you know, under the leadership of Commissioner Miller, she's done a phenomenal job of ensuring that we exceed the standards, whether it's state or federal standards, and we want to make sure that other counties who are bringing their water into our county, that they clean that up as well, too. And there are a number of pieces of legislation that would help to address that, as well as working in the work group. And with the budget, you know, we, we make the ask, and we do as best as we can to advocate for funding to come back to our districts, but as you all know, that budget is an omnibus, omnibus budget, and so when it does come to the floor, we'll have to vote on over $83 billion of funding, and hopefully, we can get that $500,000 in there tucked in for St. Clair Shores.
Good. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for all your hard work. We appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Have a great evening.
You, too.
So this is your chance here to skedaddle.
Just work, Paul.
Item three is audience participation on the agenda. My agenda items, two-minute time limit. Abby, do we have anyone?
No, we do not.
Item four is the brownfield plan for 22601 East Nine Mile Road. That's A and B. A is a public hearing regarding the brownfields, so we will open the public hearing for anyone who would like to speak regarding the brownfield at 22601 East Nine Mile Road. Public hearing regarding the brownfield plan over there, that'll be replacing St. Mary's. Anyone regarding, would like to speak regarding that before I close the public hearing? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and move to 4B, which is request approval of a brownfield plan for 22601 East Nine Mile Road, and CDI Director Denise Pike.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This item before you is for a brownfield plan for 22601 East Nine Mile Road, which is the former St. Mary's location. Luke Bonner is here. He is a consultant to All rig USA to discuss what the project entails, and Jordan Chapman with All rig USA is also here to talk with council.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Walby, and members of council. My name is Luke Bonner with the Bonner Advisory Group, and as Denise mentioned, I'm also joined by Jordan Chapman, the owner and developer from All rig USA. Thank you very much for your consideration this evening for the redevelopment of 22601 and 22501 East Nine Mile Road, better known as the former St. Mary's nursing home. The project as proposed is approximately 9,000-plus square feet of new retail space. Now, I will go to the next slide. This was the original plan. There is a new amended plan that's going through the city review process. That will go through Planning Commission and City Council again, I believe. The plan calls for approximately between 9,000 and 10,000 square feet of new retail space intended to be anchored by Panera Bread and Chipotle. This would replace the roughly 26,000 square foot dilapidated and functionally obsolete St. Mary's nursing home. Our request this evening is related to what's called eligible activities under the Brownfield Act. The Brownfield Act is governed by Public Act 381 of 1996. The site itself actually qualifies as a facility, meaning one of the parcels is contaminated. The other parcel, by virtue of being adjacent contiguous to the contaminated parcel, is also eligible. So there's a significant amount of environmental activity, mostly related to the demolition cost, roughly 245,000, 246,000 is related to demolition activities, another 20,000 related to asbestos abatement. So the total project cost that we're seeking reimbursement for is $295,879 plus a 15% contingency. We added the 15% contingency, which is allowed by statute, just for any unknowns. Sometimes these older sites, especially when there's asbestos involved or tricky demolition, there could be unknown costs, so we just wanted to account for that. The total eligible activities then brings the amount to 365,000. What we project over the, the course of 14 years is that amount would be reimbursed based on the amount of property taxes that would be generated from the site. Based on the time that this plan was approved, we actually made that projection off of a single building, not off of two buildings. So we actually think that there would be improvement upon that 14-year reimbursement period. So with that, I'm available for questions. I know Jordan Chapman is also available for questions as well.
A couple of things I'd like to add to their proposal. This, as a city knows, or as council knows, the entire city is a brownfield. It is eligible under the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, but brownfields are site-specific. The other unique aspect to this is this parcel is actually in the Downtown Development Authority. So the Downtown Development Board of Directors, DDA Board of Directors, opted to relinquish the funds that they would capture on this site and award those over to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for reimbursement to this. What that means is that this particular proposal has no impact on the general fund. It does have impact on the DDA fund. They will not get the capture from this site for the period of the brownfield plan reimbursement. The other unique aspect to this is that, as you know, this facility or this site has been mostly derelict for upwards of a decade, I believe. So we are, we staff are proposing that council approve the full reimbursement, which is different than previous brownfield plans that council has approved, but we believe that this site actually epitomizes the reason that the brownfield redevelopment or the brownfield statute was adopted in that it levels the playing field for old obsolete sites to be redeveloped into viable productive uses, which we think this particular proposal will definitely enhance the downtown. There have been, council has approved in the past, the following brownfield plans. There was an approval for TCF Bank. There was the Gourmet House demolition. If you recall, that was something that the city required. They demolish it. There was a brownfield plan approved. Actually, Docs is capturing that reimbursement amount currently because there was nothing that was redeveloped on the site until now. Marsall on Industrial Drive, Buffalo Wild Wings, I believe that was Bowling Alley turned into Buffalo Wild Wings, St. Gertrude's into Lake Shore Senior Living, which is now American House, and the Chapitain Apartments, which is now Sienna, or the assisted living facility on Greater Mac. So those are the plans that have been previously approved. So as Luke mentioned, he is here to answer any site-specific questions. I will, again, reiterate that the amended site plan is currently going through approvals. So that hasn't come to council, but it doesn't at all impact the amount of eligible expenses. What it does is potentially expedites the reimbursement of the brownfield funds, which would then allow the property to go back to the DDA.
I know you said it doesn't have an impact, but when will that go in front of planning to come to us, tentatively?
I believe it's scheduled for the first meeting in May to, to go before Planning Commission, so I expect in May.
Got you. All right. Questions? Mr. Rubelo.
Hi, Denise.
Hi.
Thanks for, because that was one of the questions I asked. Thanks for researching that. You like the success stories of these.
Absolutely.
You know, I'm totally for this type of stuff, and always have been. So I didn't realize there were so many success stories like that. Now, and this, of course, this property qualifies for, okay. And using Brownsfield, these are effective tools that cities are given to, you know, save these properties from being obsolete and deteriorating buildings and redevelopments and all this good stuff that comes along with it.
Right.
So especially this piece of property has been decaying for a number of years. It's sound correct for what we're, we're looking for in the future?
It is. It is, absolutely.
Okay. And Bob, what we've done, the little past history, this had come up a few, a few meetings ago, and this is all legal. I always sort of ask Bob that question every, okay.
It is pursuant to the statute. Yes.
Asbestos on the property? There look like to be about 200 pages of, you know, samples of what the heck's on the property.
God bless you for reading through all of it, too.
I won't say I read through all 200 because there, there was some stuff in here. I didn't, I didn't know what the, you know, APT or something, stuff like that meant, but.
Well, ironically, what really qualifies the site is the parcel that the city of St. Clair Shores owns, which is 22501 Nine Mile. That site is actually the one that's environmentally contaminated that the city didn't know about.
Matt, can you go back and point that out, show that where that, it's our parcel?
So it's this corner, small triangle parcel on the corner of Glen Court and Niagara.
Okay, that, that building's been there a really long time. Who, who knows? You know, that's, and then you got somebody who wants to come along and redevelop it. I mean, if we say, turn something like this down, okay, and we'll just say worse came to worse, and they weren't interested in doing it anymore because of our actions, you know, somebody might come along years from now, and it's going to be a lot more expensive than this. So the most important part to me is, you know, nobody came here to, to object to this. The Downtown Development Authority, who, where the money would be going to, signed off on it and said they'd like to see this because they think that this is close enough to the Nine Mile and Mac area that would affect what they're doing and, you know, make it look nicer. So, which is cool that they would, they signed off on it. And who else signed off on this? The TIF?
The Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board of Directors, which I would just note there is a member of the board here, actually, three members of the board here.
Okay.
Mr. Simick.
Yeah, there's Stan there.
Mayor Walby and Mr. Lent are all on the Brownfield Board.
Highly respect Stan. He's been around the city for a long time, and I think he can, sort of a visionary type of person, too. And I think when we set out to, to sort of fix the Nine Mile and Mac area and fix it up and bring activities to it, these are the type of things that we were going to run into at some point. So I'm all for this as far as the Brownsfield, and I think this is good for our city. They signed off on it, no objections. This has been discussed plenty of times. I will move to approve the brownfield plan for 22601 East Nine Mile Road, requesting reimbursement of a total of $365,261 in eligible expenses over a period of 14 years.
Correct.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Rubelo.
Supported by Mr. Frederick. And just to be clear, this amount here, of course, this has got the contingent in it. That's, that's A.
It does.
If, if, if in fact it's less, I mean, we're not handing this money over. They have to verify this and, et cetera, right? So I mean, this is, this is not just a lump sum of money. We've, we've got to see it go through CDI to make sure that the expenses they're asking to be reimbursed do meet the criteria and are eligible, right? So you're going to go through that and make sure of all that.
I will, Mayor, and that is correct. We have to approve their eligible expenses. The other thing that it's important is that the developer is carrying all of these costs over the 14 years. So not only will we be approving them and not giving them the full amount if they don't need it, but they will be bearing the, the upfront cost of doing the development. So they get that back incrementally with the increase in property valuation.
And, and the 14 years is based on the 365, correct?
Correct.
So that's based on the contingent. So if we don't have a contingent amount, I'm, I'm doing a little math in my head, but we may be in that 12-year area, right? We may be two, 11 or 12 years, right? If in fact we don't use the contingent.
And I think the other thing that's important to notice, Mr. Bonner said, is that if the valuation, so the valuations are obviously projections. If the valuation comes in higher, the amounts to be reimbursed each year are higher, then we just pay that back sooner than 14 years. But the outside time that we would, we are asking council to approve is the 14 years, which would be 2039.
Mr. Karen?
Thank you. So in terms of the, the current taxable value there, that is based on the buildings there, right? It's not based on a vacant lot. So that, the taxes generated from that taxable value is still going to general fund?
Correct.
And that, so it's, okay. So I think that, that helps because it's, you know, because we had the conversation of how Councilman Rubino negotiated these, and we never did 100% reimbursement and that. Because it was, we were dealing with some vacant lots and that, and there wasn't much tax revenue coming in from a vacant lot versus already a building and that. So, so that kind of does help a bit with this being at the 100%. Even with the DDA signing off, it's like, well, they've got some big plans they want to do.
Right.
And that, and, and this potentially sets a precedent for other properties within the DDA. And that's, that's something we've got to be prepared for.
Right.
That this kind of resets the ask going forward.
Although I, I would note that I don't think there are many other properties in the DDA that are as derelict as this.
I think there's one.
I can think of one.
So, okay. So, all right. So in terms of the, looking at table two, I think the other thing that's unique in the DDA is that we have a separate 2-mil tax, but in that table, that doesn't show that 2-mil being captured. So is that being kept out of?
Councilman, table two actually does show the DDA 2-mil being captured.
Yeah, but it's lined up with the total amount of all the other years. It doesn't have a separate value?
I'm not sure I follow. I'd have to look at it with you. I'm sorry. Yeah, that's actually a really good point. So why don't we, I see what you're saying. So the, the 2-mil DDA capture is aligned with the total amount, and it does not actually show the tax revenue associated with that mileage. So we'll, we'll update the table to show that.
All right. So the intent is that the, the 2-mil would be based on the current taxable value. That would still flow to the DDA and that, but the,
Incremental.
The incremental tax capture from that 2-mils will go to the brownfield?
Correct.
Is that how it's supposed to get set up?
Yes, that's correct.
So that'll, that'll also
I missed that.
Change the timeframe a little bit and that. So, okay. And then in terms of, Denise, in terms of the, we'll dive into a little more of the financing of the, the tax revenue that comes in, that still get, full amount still gets paid through the taxes, but the tax capture goes into the brownfield account, and then the brownfield account will reimburse them over time or reimburse them upfront, or how's that work?
No, it's reimbursed over time based on the amount of the increase in valuation. So it will go from the baseline amount, which was set, will be set, actually, I believe, this year. And as the property valuation grows, the difference between the baseline and what the valuation is then gets reimbursed back to the developer
Okay.
once they submit the eligible expenses.
And that goes through the approval of the Brownfield Development?
It does. The Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, we would submit, much like, you know, bills are submitted to council, we would submit those to the BRA, and they would get approved. The next step in this process is actually, there's a reimbursement agreement which The next step in this process is actually, there's a reimbursement agreement which gets approved by the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, which will essentially formalize all of the decisions that we're talking about here tonight, and it puts the limit, the time limit on the reimbursement.
And just to add, the Brownfield Development Authority Board does not have very much money. I think you give like $50,000, $51,000.
Yeah, that was a concern as well, whether they'd be required to do a $300,000 reimbursement in a year.
No.
Or whether that's overtime. It is overtime.
Overtime.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Vitale.
Yeah, I was just going to point out something I think that residents would be interested in, and that actually the item that helps justify that is that, and I was unaware of this, that that property at one time was an auto filling station, service station, and dry cleaners property.
Mm-hmm.
It says in 1967, Bob's Industrial occupied the building with Detroit Print for the years 77 through 82. These businesses occupied the site with unknown hazardous waste storage, disposal activities, petroleum contamination, et cetera, et cetera. One of the bases is for the Brownfield. So if you like to see things cleaned up, plus the asbestos that's at the building now, so.
Correct. It was all of those uses.
Yep.
That is correct.
I never even knew those uses exist, and I don't think many people would because we're going back 40 years.
Right.
So.
Ms. Rusi.
Thank you. Yeah, until I read the minutes from the Brownfield, I wasn't aware that the site plan was changing.
Yes. It's proposed to be changing. It isn't approved, nor is it recommended to change as of yet. But again, that has to go through the process, right? It'll go to Planning Commission, and it will come to council. So it will ultimately be your decision if it's changing.
Yep. In terms of the standalone Chipotle, is that having its own drive-through, I can't see it from here.
It is having a pickup window, which we've conferred with the Assistant City Attorney does not need a second special land use approval. It doesn't have, as what is regularly referred to as a squawk box. It doesn't have a menu board. You order on the app, you pick it up at the window.
Okay. I just, I can't see, this is the first time seeing that. So I was just wondering because I saw the separate lane from a little bit I can see. Okay. In terms of the projects you had named initially for the previous Brownfields over, I don't know what period of years that would be over. How, what's the span of years for those previous projects?
It is since the inception of the Brownfield Board, or actually the city as a Brownfield. And I believe that's 2008.
Okay. And this would be the first one for a full 100% reimbursement?
It would be.
What would the other ones look like in terms of the reimbursement?
Generally around 80% of the, what was requested is what was approved.
Okay.
And I would say, Ms. Rusi, seven to eight years in, you know, timeframe.
That's what I was, that was my second question about the timeframe. So seven to eight, this is 14.
Yes, that's what I called, yes.
This is 14.
And when would the clock start on that period?
On the 14 years?
Yeah.
It would start, I believe, this, it's with the December 31 valuation.
Okay.
So the project is projected to start this summer and be complete in summer of '26.
Okay. And we have the developer being Alrig, which before we were, I think it was the St. Clair Shores Retail Management to LLC. Now it's Alrig?
Well, Alrig is the umbrella developer, I believe, the St. Clair Shores Retail.
And that's just a related, that's just a LLC under the umbrella.
In LLC for the purposes of this project.
And would this be the landlord and renting out to the tenants in those, so Chipotle would be a tenant, Panera would be a tenant, and they would be the operators of the businesses operating within those, the facility, correct?
Correct.
For the other ones you named, are those any situation like that where it's the developer who's benefiting? Now this is the landlord, not the operator?
I don't believe so, actually. I don't believe so.
Okay. So would these benefits flow to the tenants in terms of what they're renting? I guess that's not a question for up here. I'm just wondering that because it's a little bit different than...
What do you guys think? Come on up, Jordan.
Hi. My name is Jordan Chapman with Alrig USA. I guess to answer your question indirectly, it would be benefiting the tenants, given that without the reimbursement, you know, the cost that I would need for them to pay in rent each year would have to go significantly higher, which may put it out of the, you know, their price range of being able to pay on an annual basis. So I think indirectly, yes, they would be benefiting because it makes their rents, you know, market rate or reasonable.
I would hope they'd be market rate no matter what, right? Because that's what a market rate is.
Yeah, but when it comes to cost of construction, right, like if, you know, you're not able to get, you know, an NOI each year, then, you know, the ability to construct and develop right now would not be feasible.
Do Alrig have them, because I know one's Panera, and that's been Panera since we approved the site plan. Now I see Chipotle, which is, again, this is the first I'm hearing about a Chipotle, but this is also the first I'm seeing the buildings being bifurcated at this point compared to what we had approved or my colleagues had approved. Are these, and again, this might not be any of our business, but I'm just curious, do they have agreements for this? Or are they just proposed tenants or anticipatory tenants? I'm just wondering about that, the certainty we could say Chipotle and a Panera.
Yeah, the Panera lease is out for execution right now. And then Chipotle, we're negotiating the lease. So we've agreed upon, you know, the basic terms in a letter of intent. So now it's really just going back and forth on the lease and expected to be, have that done in the next 30 to 45 days.
Okay. And if this is approved tonight?
What was this? Say that again.
And if this is not approved tonight, would that impact anything?
You know, I guess it would impact us evaluating the project to move forward, just given that, you know, it is a cost that we've deemed needed to have it go through based on our pro forma and the construction numbers that we've budgeted for.
It's just funny, when we approved or my colleagues approved the site plan, everyone was congratulating, thanks for getting the site cleaned up, thanks for getting the site cleaned up. Well, it turns out that you're getting reimbursed for those costs. So it's just kind of funny. This idea, the Brownfield didn't come up when we were doing the site plan or the rezoning or the special land use. It wasn't even contemplated, at least for us at that point.
I don't know, I don't know if I have an answer for that.
I wouldn't imagine so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Rubell, seconded by Mr. Frederick to approve the Brownfield plan at 22601 Nine Mile, requesting reimbursement of a total of $365,261 in eligible expenses over a period of 14 years. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Six to one it passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 5 is request to approve Miller Canfield Letter of Engagement and Resolution of Intent. We usually have from Miller Canfield, Pat McGow here, but he's on vacation. Apparently a lot of people on vacation, so Jeff Aronoff, come on up. Jeff, thank you for stepping in. Pinch Hitty. And again, you are from Miller Canfield, too.
Yes, Jeff Aronoff from Miller Canfield, Pat McGow's partner. We are bond counsel to the city. The agenda item reflects our engagement letter and the notice of intent resolution. But just to be clear, from our perspective, the important item is the notice of intent resolution. It's perfectly, we like having our engagement letter approved, and that's outstanding. But that is, you know, a bond counsel engagement letter simply sets forth our scope of services and the terms of our fees and so forth, which, for those of you that have worked on bond transactions before, have been a part of those, those are paid out of proceeds of the bonds at closing. There's no hourly, you know, rate that's being charged as we go. And since it is paid out of proceeds, we, while we reserve the right to be reimbursed for costs, we don't get paid our fee until the deal closes. So I don't know if there's a, if there is even an action item here for our engagement letter. Again, the real operative item is the notice of intent resolution.
And Mr. Lent, tell us how we got here.
So following council's direction in regards to our police and fire buildings, as council is well aware, we were able to be able to use our ARPA funding to get both of those projects off the ground and rolling. As we can see now, both have been completely demoed. We have started the foundation work at the fire station and the police station. We're still working on the underground. With that being stated, we are approximately $4 million short, and we have the opportunity to utilize a bond service. Through our work-study sessions and council's communication and direction, we have engaged with Miller Canfield, and we have Miller Canfield here. I personally chose to put the engagement letter on there. There is fees that are incurred with the bond. It does, as was stated, don't get rolled into the bond, but it is a significant amount, and I would like to have council approve utilizing Miller Canfield. I know this is the firm that we utilized with our Tifa bond, and we have utilized them in the past. So we went with somebody who knows our city and is really well-adverse in bonds. And tonight, as stated before, we are looking for the notice of intent so we can actually get this ball moving. Once we get this ball moving, the next direction would be to go out, solicit bonds. Any information on what that total value is, how many years, all of that will come back in front of council for final approval. And we will, coming back as well, when we have all of that, we have to still get a finance person. The finance person that we had utilized in the years past unfortunately has retired. So we have reached out to his firm as well, and we are looking to bring in a finance person as well that will work hand in hand with Miller Canfield.
So even though this says $5 million, that at the end may or may not be what we end up doing. It's all going to come back here again. The amount that we need to do and the length of time, whether it's 15 years, 20 years, 25 years, et cetera, correct?
That is correct. This is a price not to exceed the $5 million. As we stated in all of our forms in the past that has been handed out to council through the ARPA, it is approximately $4 million that we are short. We put in $5 million because obviously if there is any unforeseen's or anything else that could come up with a police and or fire buildings that we're not anticipating.
Questions. Ms. Rusi.
Thank you. This had been a previous council agenda. It was removed due to a couple of absences, correct?
That's correct.
Is the paperwork in our packet the same that was in front, to be in front of council the previous month?
I would pass that to our Assistant City Manager. He's the one who did the packet for these, and been working with Miller Canfield.
Miller Canfield did update their notice of resolution of intent as well as their letter for, to tailor it to this meeting. We previously talked about the potential of including other projects on there. I think a previous iteration of that included those projects, but this one narrows it down to very specifically the police and fire building projects.
Yeah, the one we had before, I include the library. So there are three projects, not additional projects, just one additional project being the library. That was, I guess, version two of the letter, and this is version three, at least, based on the document ID at the bottom. So this is an updated one. It wasn't called, that change wasn't called out in the packet anywhere. I'm not sure if anyone else when reading it noticed that there's no more library in here like there was when you reviewed your packet for the previous meeting. But interestingly enough, at least I thought was interesting, I went through and noticed, oh, the library fell out. The not to exceed $5 million stayed the same. So when there were three projects, the central fire, police, and the library, it was not to exceed $5 million. Now we took the one project of the three out, and it's just the fire, it's just the police, and it's still not to exceed $5 million.
Correct. So as we all are aware here, the library was short approximately $400,000, $500,000, and that would put us at about the $4 million, 4.5 with that project being included. Once again, this $5 million is not to exceed. That is not the final number. Council will have final say on that final number. So putting it together to get the bond rates and get the information, we kept with the $5 million. But ultimately, I do think that number is probably going to be close to the $4 million when we come down to voting. Underground is typically where a lot of the, I would say, unknown costs sometimes percolate. We are done with that at the fire station. We're starting work on foundation. The police department, we are getting closer by the day. So I think by the time this bond comes back to council, we're going to have all of that finalized. And I think, like I said, that that number will be closer to the four. But for, you know, conservative area to make sure that we still have that wiggle room is why we left it at the $5 million.
I just thought, I was curious, we did that to one project, but keep it five, not to exceed $5 million, where three projects was not to exceed $5 million.
It was the smallest project.
And in that time, it would be nice to have, if the circumstances had changed, because the last time we were talking about and cleaning, which I was not in favor of cleaning the bond, so I'm not saying, oh, let's totally do that. I'm glad to see it fell off. But I wasn't sure if anyone else was aware it had fallen off because I, it wasn't called out. I just remembered what I had read when I had read the last packet like two means ago or three means ago, whenever it was previously noticed. I saw this was different, and it's like, how is this different? So I had to look up the old packet and see how it was different, even though the not to exceed amount hasn't changed. This is two projects instead of three projects. So just for people's awareness, if you didn't notice the deduction of those. Couple of words, but very important, very important in terms of what this money can and cannot be used for.
Thank you. Mr. Karen.
Thank you. So I guess I'm a little more confused on that one, kind of going back to emails from last week. The construction manager was supposed to be at risk. So it's, this whole process we went through different than what we've ever done before, was we went, hired the construction manager, originally thought it was for a certain amount. Turns out, no, it was after they went through, made other, you know, finalized the design with the architect, had their input with the architect, went out, bitted the individual projects, individual jobs, and then they came back with a guaranteed maximum price back to us. But for some reason now, we're still talking about having to have an additional million of bond revenue to cover expenses we don't know about yet, when we were told it was supposed to be the construction manager at risk, not the construction manager never at risk.
So to kind of go back on that, the price did change a few different times. Those prices did not really change. They went through different divisions of the program. We went through a design development. Once the design development was done, we had a price. Then we went through construction documents. Once the construction documents were completed, we got a new price. And then they came back with a third thing because of the underground and undermining where the cell tower was and where the dog area was. And with the soil that was sampled there, there was some concern of what kind of foundation was there. Did it match what our drawings were? We had two different kind of drawings that were stated, if you remember, how thickness...
There were soil drawings before...
There was.
We finalized the design and put out for all the bids. Because we had changed the design to put in the geopires.
Geopires, yeah.
Geopires, because that wasn't part of the original design. We just thought a regular filled foundation would suffice. Because it's close to the water, they found it wasn't. That was an additional cost up in the guaranteed maximum price. So like, for example, the thing I'm last week, which turns out after two days, turns out it wasn't an issue, okay? But it goes back to why are we, after all that work, still talking about there could be an additional $1 million needed that needs to be included in this when the library got taken out of it?
So to go back to the specifics of that area, when they came back with the geopires, that was considered at that time an allowance. That was outside because they still didn't know, were the drawings that were provided, was there a 12-inch thick concrete? Was it six inches? What got built? Because they were getting different responses. So there was a huge unknown. So that area where the geopires were, where the basement was, was part of the gross maximum price up to an allowance. They put an allowance up there. I don't have it right in front of me, so I say sorry, councilmen. But I believe it was like $408,000 that was there. Outside of that, anything goes wrong with the job of the foundation, that kind of stuff, that is all in the gross maximum price. The outside stuff with the underground, because of not having clarity, was put in as an allowance. That was what was approved. That was what was put in.
There's a contingency in there.
Yep.
In the gross maximum price. There is a contingency amount.
Right. And that's what they were asking in that email for clarity was, do we want to start using some of our contingency with this part of the job?
So we're back to the gross maximum price has that contingency. The bond that you're requesting has $1 million more. I am back to, under what conditions would we think an additional $1 million would be needed over the gross maximum price that we were told were guaranteed because we went through this different process?
And like I said, this price is just a price not to exceed. I fully anticipate it coming back right at the $4 million mark, which is what we are short.
Okay.
But I would rather shoot high, have the price, budget for the higher price, and then we come in at the $4 million and we're at the price that we thought we were at.
All right.
And we can always make the amendment to the budget tonight if that's what all of council approves, that they don't want the extra money in there. We could go to the $4 million.
Well, you already kind of know where I'm at on this because I voted against it back in October, so... back in October, so that's up to the majority.
Yep.
All right. So legal questions. In our charter, section 10.6 has effective upon passage, no bonds or any other obligations, which pledges the full faith and credit of the city shall be issued unless approved by a majority of the electors voting thereon at any general or special election. And going out for bonds does require us to pledge the full faith and credit of the city. Went back, I found an email from 2013 from Mr. Erie responding to Ms. Erin Stoll. And basically, she was asking basically that question back then. Because, yeah, we've gone out for bonding before, and we were told the charter didn't apply. So the response Mr. Erie gave back then is that, "You may be confused by the interplay between two separate legal concepts, one preemption to the relationship between charter and ordinance provisions. A stricter charter provision will trump a less strict ordinance. However, the doctrine of preemption results in state law superseding or preempting either charter or ordinances that are in conflict with state law regardless of which is stricter." In other words, it makes no difference which is stricter, if state law supersedes. State law is superior. In this case, bond council has opined state law supersedes our charter." So which state law?
So these bonds are, would be issued pursuant to the revised municipal finance act. I won't get into too much detail, but I'll make a really important statement about that. The municipal finance act mostly, mostly what it does is it governs the relationship between bond issuers and the Michigan Department of Treasury. It's the process and so forth, what you have to submit. It doesn't really authorize bonds specifically. You have to find other statutes to do that. Home Rule City Act, if you're different forms of government, Township Act, DPW Acts, and so forth. However, there is one specific type of bond that is directly authorized in the Home Rule, in the revised municipal finance act that is what we call a capital improvement bond. So I think, you know, I'm not familiar with that conversation, but I think the question there is, you now have, in contrast to most other types of bond-
In context, this question was related to us building a new court-
Okay.
-and using bond for the court. So it was for building another municipal building.
Right, so it sounds like that was probably another, what we call, capital improvement bond. These were only available starting in 2001 when the municipal finance act was revised. So it is the one bond issue that is separately, directly authorized pursuant to statute, not sort of like a lot of other voted bond issues, which I think you're sort of referring to in reading that charter provision. That would have been bonds authorized under the Home Rule City Act, which is your general authorizing statute, and your charter connects to that. But I think that conversation about the relationship between state law and the charter would be implicated here because you have a bond type that is directly authorized pursuant to state law. That's Act 34 of 2001.
Okay. So specifically related capital improvement bonds, but not other municipal-type bonds?
I mean, I wouldn't say not any other type, but I would say, think like, like you have road bonds that you levy a new tax for, let's say. You would have to send those before the voters in an election. There are other types of bonds, let's say, revenue bonds. Revenue bonds have their own, their own authorizing statute. Those are not, I think the charter provision you were reading, and I'm not familiar with it, I apologize, but it sounded like those were bonds only pledging the general obligation, full faith and credit of the city, right?
Correct.
Okay, so revenue bonds wouldn't necessarily be implicated there. However, for certain types of revenue bonds, even though they generally just pledge revenues of your water and sewer system or something like that, they can have a general obligation pledge attached to them. You can have a kind of a backup pledge. I would say in that case, you probably still have a separate statute that specifically and directly authorizes those bonds. So again, I apologize, I'm not familiar with that entire conversation, and I only, my familiarity with that charter provision is just based on what you're reading, so answering a little on the spot. But I really do believe that in this case, because we're dealing with directly statutorily authorized bonds, I'm not going to say these are the only types of bonds that are directly authorized by statute, but they don't rely on just the general borrowing power of the city. I think that is what that, the charter statute kind of question would relate to.
Okay. Thank you for that. Just wanted to get that on the record for how that may be different and that for other ones. Appreciate that. So just last thing I'd bring up, went through the budget, because kind of the last main objection to this is, you know, the other time that we've done bonds, we had a revenue source that was being dedicated to it. When we did the pier, Tifa agreed to pay for those bonds. You know, court, when we did bonding on that, we had the court building fund. We had enough saved up to pay for half of it, the rest of the bond being paid out of the court building fund going forward. So there's a dedicated revenue stream. In this case, this would be general fund. No dedicated revenue stream. It's got to come out of the pot with everything else. What we already have in there, which, you know, going back to the $5.5 million of building improvements, energy improvements that we did with the JCI project, that basically turned into bonds. It was a different legal contract we had with JCI. You know, basically, it's leasing equipment, and then eventually in the end, we would own it and that. But how it shows up in our budget is, as principal and interest, right? So we're already paying out of the general fund $350,000 in principal and interest on that. So I was a little surprised that in the packet, we didn't have any type of estimate of whether it's $4 million, $4.5, $5 million, over 20 years, 30 years, 15 years, guess at what today's interest rate would be, what that potential payment each year would need to be. I realize that we'll get the specific one. That will come to council after they're, you know, they're solicited and has to come back for approval that those amounts will be given. But I would think my colleagues would have benefited from having that information, you know, because basically, the vote back in October was to gather information for this, and we're seven months later, and some of that just basic of what's going to be long-term impact wasn't included. So that's all.
Mr. Vitale.
I guess my issue with this is the library being taken out of it because we'd had discussions about how we were going to fund the library. And I was okay with it being included in the bond. I'm not okay with uncapping headley or anything that results in a net tax increase to residents. So now with library pulled out of here, looks like we're going forward on library. We can't count on our state rep who's here today. I hope she can get it, certainly, but we can't spend that money that we don't know we're getting yet. How are we going to fund the library?
So the library has its current fund balance, and working with some of the library, the building committee, we also, they are, I know, gone for Qantas and different kind of fundraising and stuff. We feel that we do have enough money without touching the general fund fund balance to be able to do the library project as presented currently with utilizing the fund balance on the library.
And there was additional six-figure cost on when the library was shut down? I mean, that was coming up-
I'm familiar with that cost savings. I'm familiar with that there was money available in a fund, but I didn't, was not aware that it would cover the $500,000 shortfall.
It was close to $400,000 at this point.
It was close, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so we're not talking about any kind of headley resets or anything like that?
Absolutely not.
Okay, well, that gives me a little bit of comfort.
Yes.
Yep.
Mr. Rabello.
Yeah, I didn't realize that was, could be covered like that, too. And I know we do have some other efforts going on as far as, because I'm not interested in chopping anything out of our library. I think our library is a beautiful, wonderful place and educational, great for the community. And it has been that way, and I think every single one of us uses that library. And I know I owe them money, so I'll come in tomorrow. But it's, I did notice that it was out of the bonds, but it's very comforting to hear what you just said, that in a fail-safe situation, we have a way to go back and help that cause out in any way that would hurt the library. I think everyone at St. Clair's shores, it's iconic, our library, and people use it. And thank, I mean, it sounds like you're very, very well-versed in this stuff, so great explanation. So I'm just sort of doing the math here, and I'm just, I guess, put it down to the simplest equation. So for two, two buildings, two brand-new buildings, police and fire, it's going to cost in bonds $4 million.
Let's see, that's the estimate that we have, I think, currently.
That's correct.
Yes, round numbers, yes. And yes, it says $5 million, so it is, it is higher, but again, it will come back in front of us, the length of time and how much we bond.
Okay.
And we will be the, we will be the final decision-maker on what we bond, how long we bond for.
Okay, and Miller Canfield, you guys, they make about $35,000? Is that what that number is, round?
It's $29,000.
Okay, $29,000. So I think that that's a pretty good deal, having brand-new buildings that'll outlive all of us in this room, that are state-of-the-art. And we're not going to exceed $5 million was the number. And it's going to finish off these buildings, getting that coming in. We'll pretty much be close to done, in case some, something happens that we're not aware of.
This money at the end, we need this money in order to complete these buildings.
Finish it off.
Not, I'm not saying the $5 million, you know, at this point, we're estimating $4 million to complete the buildings, yes.
Okay. And again, let me reiterate, I'm not interested in chopping anything out of the library. I'm sure, we got a lot of smart people up here, and I'm sure we can figure something else on how to not hurt that library, because people love it. So with that, I'll move to approve the engagement letter and notice of intent provided by Miller Canfield.
Moved by Mr. Rabello, is there a second?
Support.
By Mr. Frederick with a question by Mr. Vitale.
More of a statement. Councilman Rabello reiterated several times that he does not want to chop anything out of the library. I, equal energy, do not want to raise anyone's tax rates.
We understand that.
Okay.
And I think just for the library where there was, and I'm not on that, I didn't know Mr. Frederick and Ms. Rusi, what we saw was a price, and I think there were two, two other items on there. Lights, I mean, we haven't determined that yet, right?
Carpeting.
Carpeting.
Paint, so I mean, we get some of those, and we still have to resolve, but, right, we had a, we had a base, and then we've got some of these other items that were working. And yes, we were very confused, specifically me, I was concerned about that, and this is where we've been working diligently to find some additional money, which we have found, and so that's why I said.
Ma'am.
Yes.
May I add one more thing?
Yes, Mr. Rabello.
Mr. Vitale brings up a good point. I'm not interested. I would agree with Chris on that, okay? Just in case that pops up again.
That makes me feel good.
Moved by Mr. Rabello, seconded by Mr. Frederick to approve the engagement letter and notice of intent provided by Miller Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Five to two, it passes? Thank you. Thank you for stepping, and we appreciate your assistance. It was needed. Item six, bid contracts, purchase orders, request approved purchase of light rescue truck for the fire department. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and council. Michael Hadad, driver engineer from the fire department. With me is battalion chief Adam Bolan. He's battalion chief in charge of our fleet and apparatus. And we are here tonight presenting the light rescue truck. So currently, right now, our rescue truck is a 1997 Chevy 6500, was, served us for a lot of years. It's up to about 70,000 miles now and almost 7,000 engine hours, which equates to about 192,000 miles of some hard work. The rescue truck that we have in our department is used primarily for our high-risk, low-frequency type runs. These are any structural collapse, confined space, high angle, or trench rescue that we come in contact with. So a lot of big equipment that we don't use on an everyday basis, but need to have it here to stabilize any emergency that happens. So we see an uptick in these types of runs, especially when there's infrastructure work going on. You get waterproofing, anything underground, this apparatus is going to bring that equipment to the scene and have it ready for us to use. So the apparatus committee and the technical rescue team kind of put together some ideas. We've been working at this for a while. We're given a budget from the motor pool fund of $225,000. Started hitting the rolodex to find vendors that might be able to do this type of project. And we came across several different vendors, put in RFP together, which went out on a bid net for four weeks. Thirty-three vendors downloaded the RFP. We received four bids. Our lowest bid was McQueen, which is formerly Kodiak Emergency Vehicles, a vendor that we've used before for ambulances and fire trucks. They are planning to build this in-house, using parts from other suppliers, and expect to build time on this for about nine months. They gave us good warranties, lifetime on the structure, electrical five years, paint five years, three years on the full conversion. They have a local repair facility, and if we have to run it back up to their shop, it's in Grand Ledge, they'll take it back there. When we did bid this out, we bid it out for a four-wheel drive and regular two-wheel drive, just to kind of see where our prices were going to land, as well as a few other inclusive such as a rescue winch. Total came out on the lowest bid from McQueen was $238,986.10. So we are requesting from council-
That's the four-by-four then, and the winch, right?
Yeah, correct.
So you get both in there.
Yep, yep, four-wheel drive with the winch. So we're requesting from council for a budget amendment of $13,968 to cover the additional cost.
And to go to four-wheel drive, it was only about $2,500.
Yeah, which I was, we were surprised.
Yeah, I was surprised, too.
So we felt like the extra $2,000 were going to give us the four-wheel drive and the rescue winch and shelving and everything the way that is going to be very user-friendly for us. So.
Mr. Le.
Yep, and I'm just going to piggyback off with the, this purchase will come out of the motor pool. The motor pool did purchase the six water trucks and water vehicles, which those came in a little bit under budget. So the motor pool is actually still going to be under budget in the purchase of motor vehicles. So we just need to approve the amount, even though the fire line did go over. We do have enough money in the motor pool to be able to fund this without doing a budget amendment.
Mr. Vitale.
Yeah, just one question. No problem with anything in the specs, other than I'm curious, why did we spec specifically a Ford 550? Why not leave it open Ford, Chevrolet, Ram? Is there a reason?
The main, the main reason is, well, we've always stuck with Ford because of the discount that we get on the chassis typically from Ford has been greater than that from GM or from Stellantis. So the F-550 chassis is the same chassis we're using across the board for ambulances. This is going to be the same chassis we use for those ambulances. It makes it easy for our, our motor pool crew to kind of keep some of the same parts on hand if we have any downs or whatever. But that was kind of the reason we specified Ford, is because we, it's more consistent with the rest of our fleet.
Well, that second reason is solid.
Yep.
The first reason, I mean, we should, not necessarily going to get better discounts if we don't ask for better discounts, so that would make me think that it should be open. However, the commonality of parts, that is a solid argument. So I don't have an issue with the rest of the bid or anything like that, but I just would say that maybe in future bids, you know, these suppliers will put this equipment on anything.
Right.
So we probably should leave that part open.
For sure, yeah, something we'll consider.
Ms. Rusi.
Thank you. I actually have the same question as Chris about the specification of Ford, so can you talk about some of the types of calls that you would utilize this truck in response to?
Yes, absolutely. So like I talked about, we have a lot of infrastructure work going on. Actually, Michigan is the, is a, is up high for trench collapse. So we see more trench collapse here in the state of Michigan than anywhere else. And anybody who's doing outside waterproofing, putting in sewer pipes, a big project that's going- going down Nine Mile, which is going to be going on for two years, we have the equipment to stabilize these incidents as they come. We also carry technical rope equipment that we have not only for the city of Sinclair Shores, but also we use for the countywide team. They've purchased some equipment that we, we house in-house, and we'll take that out in the county if any other community calls upon that. Structural collapse, confined space rescue, any, anybody who's stuck anywhere, this vehicle's going to bring that type of equipment to the scene. Also, the one I left out was heavy truck with anything going down 94. We carry big struts to lift heavy trucks, get them off of vehicles, and stabilize them so we can get the victim out.
Like you said in the memo, low frequency but high risk.
Exactly, yeah.
Which I think that's a good descriptor for those type of incidents, and thankfully, low frequency.
Low frequency for sure, and, and we train a lot for those high, high-risk, low-frequency runs, because we don't see enough of them, we just want to be ready.
It, it's funny, when I was first reading this, I was thinking a truck, a truck I was envisioning like a, the type of truck we are purchased for DPW, but then Councilman Karen had emailed, because I was talking with, we were talking, he had emailed the chief for a photograph of the current vehicle, and I think calling it a truck is a little bit of an understatement. If I saw this on the street, I think most people saw this on the street, they'd think this was ambulance.
Yeah.
That's just the scope we're looking at, it's not just a pickup truck to throw some stuff in the back, it's a pretty, it's a pretty heavy-duty, it's called a light rescue truck, but it lets, to me, at least my untrained eyes, to be a pretty heavy-duty truck, so.
So, yeah, and in the fire service, we classify, you know, a heavy-duty would be a, it would almost look like a fire engine with a, with a really big box and a tandem axle, and that's heavy-duty, well, that's, we don't have to carry that kind of equipment here. So we're able to find a light rescue on a commercial chassis, which is readily available, and, and, and put a, basically place a box on the back and put all of our equipment on it and have it ready to go when we need it.
Yeah, it's definitely, first I saw the price, I'm like, for a truck, and now I see, it's like, oh, it's a truck.
Yeah, it's the, the chassis itself is about 57,000, and then it's all the, the body and the compartments and the doors and lights.
It's an important piece of equipment, this is replacing, I think it needs to be emphasized, 1997, so we definitely got a lot of use out of that one. I was in high school in 1997, so I, I think it's about time maybe to get a new piece of, of this type of equipment, so.
As impressive as the outside of that truck looks, the inside is even more impressive.
Yeah, no, it's, it's.
If you ever want to stop by, we'll show you the inside and what we have packed in.
Reading, I was thinking, a truck, this much for a truck, why don't we just go through a consortium bid for a truck like, you know, we do for other pieces of equipment, why does this need to be like specifically spet out and built? And now, you know, the picture helped a lot, I think that would be useful to see that type of visuals. It would be nice to even have it for the projector, because I know we're talking truck, people are home, we're thinking, that much for a truck? Thinking, you know, it's one of, just a pickup truck or something, but it's totally a lot more in that, it's nice to see. Four bidders, and the one being recommended is low by far, we know they can do the work because we've worked with them before, and the warranties are not only comparable to what the more expensive bidders, they're a lot better in some, some circumstances than the other bidders do.
That was definitely a standout for us as well.
Yeah, no, good work on this, I'm glad to see it, and I will move to approve. I'm, I'm looking forward to voting on something tonight positively, so I will move to approve.
Thank you.
Support. Okay, moved by Ms. Rusi, supported by Mr. Karen with a question by Mr. Karen.
Thank you. Just back to the, the Ford chassis, I did see in the flash drive, there was a invoice for the chassis from a dealership, so does McQueen already have, like, rights to the chassis, like, I'm sure they're not buying it until they get our contract, but do they already have it reserved? So then they're going to have to wait for that to start their nine-month build?
I don't believe so, he believes that they'll have the chassis and build in nine months.
Okay, get the chassis and build, and that's a total nine months from they get the award.
I'm sorry?
From when they get the award from us.
Correct.
From the purchase order.
That's, yep, that's the, that is his, or that is their, their projection, is nine months, yeah.
Yeah, and I'll just echo Councilwoman Rusi's comments of, you know, when I asked for the picture, I was thinking pickup truck, battalion chief truck, you know, something like that, and it's like, you know, but you had, you had to have very specific specifications because of the very specific, you know, specific equipment that's there, and making sure things that, being able to be stored correctly and quickly accessible on scene, also very important.
And that's, that's why we went down this path as firefighters, we like, we don't like to climb up into vehicles, we like to have things come off shelves, there's no, no lifting injuries.
Definitely see being able to walk in to a cab like that in order to grab, especially dealing with large struts, going out to lift a semi-truck.
Correct.
In an accident scene, that's very important, so.
A lot of this truck was built around the big panels for trench rescue that we store in there, and we bring those six panels to a trench rescue to stabilize that. There was an incident in Gross Point Woods, how long ago was that, about eight years ago, where a plumber was, was stuck down in there, and they didn't have the equipment on scene for quite a while, so that really opened up our eyes to, we need to be ready for this and be proactive, and that's where our program has progressively gotten to, so.
And also even for our own employees.
Absolutely, yep.
And that of the, you know, especially during the winter, number of water main breaks, and we're basically dealing with one a day, and any one of those, you get a slurry wall going, collapse while worker could be in there, and that's basically what this equipment is really meant for.
Correct.
Those type of situations.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. City of Wyandotte just had one a couple of months ago.
Yes.
Pretty bad one.
Yeah.
Couple guys got trapped. While you guys are up here as well, we've got some great news, the ambulance just came in last week, you guys have it getting detailed and getting ready, and it should be ready to go for operations probably by the end of this month?
Yeah, we got it in a week ago, all the decal was completed, radios were put in, we are just now waiting for the state inspection to give us our licensure so we can run it as an ALS vehicle. We're hoping by the 20, actually by the end of the month, we're just waiting to hear back from them, it's just dependent on how busy their schedule is, so hopefully before May, we'll, we'll have it up and running.
So it's great to see, you know, these purchases take a long time. Yeah, how long ago we purchased that?
This one was in '22.
This is '22, three years.
March of '22, we put that out, and we're just getting it now, and it's, and the last one that was approved, now we're, we're seeing it either early or late '26. That's how long it takes, there's actually, I don't know, going with, but there's a Senate inquiry in the US Senate about fire and EMS vehicles and the rise in price and private equity, so if you want to do a read, that's out there, and what we're dealing with in production times and prices, so.
Mr. Frederick.
Thanks, Mayor, so great, great job in this, you guys, appreciate it, all the hard work.
Thank you.
So my question was really for, on the, on the money side, you said we do not have to do a budget amendment for this?
We do not.
Because it's out of Motorpool.
It's out of Motorpool, their line item was going to be higher, but we are under overall, because all the purchases have been purchased out of that, that account.
Now, what about, what about, do we do carryover, is, when, when are we actually paying for this?
So this will actually end up being a carryover because of that, it actually won't be a carryover, it'll actually be earmarked in the Motorpool and their fund balance, that'll be directly for this purchase.
Earmarked and fund balance, no carryover?
Correct.
Okay, all right, that was my question.
Mr. Vitale.
Yeah, actually, since the comments came up about the heavy-duty nature of the vehicle and everything like that, I do want to say that even though I was critical about not opening up to Ram and Chevrolet, I am happy that you didn't go up that next level to go to an international or something like that, where now we're talking about extremely expensive parts and things like that, and serviceability and everything, so I, I do appreciate it, being modest enough to be the 550. And also a testament to the fire department too, and I know you guys maintain your, I know you don't do all the oil changes and everything, but you guys do keep them clean, and that's why we got 28 years of service out of the previous vehicle, that's pretty good, and nobody can complain about that. Which then jogged my memory, usually we hear something about, is there going to be a trade-in, or are we just going to put this out for bid, or, it's got to have some value still.
Yeah, it'd be a great farm truck or, or service vehicle to somebody.
I mean, is it something we could use in DPW, if it's not worth anything in bid, or?
Well, Mr. Lentz, I can evaluate that and get to us on that.
All right, because then they could use it to carry equipment or something too, we won't let them keep it red, though.
All right. By Ms. Rusi, seconded by Mr. Karen to approve the budget amendment of 13,986.
No budget, no budget amendment.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, to approve the amount, the purchase of 238,986.10 to McQueen, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seven to zero, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you all for coming out to the Easter egg hunt this year, it was, it was a great event, we actually had, once the rain went away, we had a, a great time, a lot of smiles, a lot of happy kids, so, thank you very much.
I didn't come, I was afraid my son would knock somebody over, that would be an incident.
Mine, mine did, so.
Good day in the neighborhood.
Item seven, consent agenda. Moved to approve, moved by Mr. Karen, supported by Mr. Frederick, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item eight, updates and follows from prior council meetings. Mr. Lent.
Mr. Karen suggested that project evaluations be conducted after completion to document what went well and what didn't with contractors. A draft of a post-project evaluation from developed by the city engineer was emailed to council, Karen and Vitale on 4/11/2025 for review and input. Once reviewed, elements are agreed upon, we will implement the evaluation tool immediately, the draft is also attached in the packet. Mr. Karen inquired about a timeline for installing a guardrail at Harper, we have a quote from one company and are waiting for a quote from a second company, we are also asking them how soon they can have something installed, as soon as we get the second quote, we'll send out an update. Mr. Karen requested better guidance on water lines and selected, and asked for a meeting to establish a clear methodology moving forward. Councilman Karen, city manager Lent, and DPW director Babcock have agreed to meet, and will actually be meeting later this week with our engineer, Mike Freckleton, and CDI as well. Then we had residents, we had the following speakers express support for backyard chickens, we had multiple residents, Brian Dyer, Alex Guevar, Dalton Westerfelt, Eric Dyer, Kathy Dickinson, and John Kutschman. The following public comment at the April 7th city council meeting, Mayor Wabi has directed the city administration to prepare a draft policy for council's review and discuss at a future study session to be scheduled in June. Chris Jewett, a Sinclair Shores resident, was here to talk about eastbound on Nine Mile and Harper, has a bad pothole, as the city has a plan to fix the pothole, this section of the road was removed by Consumers Energy, and when the gas station was being worked on, we're contacting Consumer Energy to get that concrete replaced. We had a final comment from David Messry, we spoke on the intersection safety in the city for bicyclists and pedestrians, all future improvement projects will consider pedestrians and bicycle safety and planning at the planning stages. That is it.
Thank you. Item nine, comments by individual council members, Mr. Frederick.
Oh, thanks, Mayor. Well, first off, and I apologize, because I know we got a copy of the, of the, of the letter, or the follow-up to all the projects, and I, I meant to call you Denise, but I didn't, but I didn't see it in there, where there, where we would put any comments, if residents made comments about it, or had concerns about, if we just add, were there any residential comments relative to the project? I thought that was, that would be meaningful at, at some point down the road, as we're looking at, you know, those vendors again, so if you could just add that, that'd be huge. All right. Next up, I'm just wondering where we're at on the SAFER grant, and we haven't talked about that in a while, do we have any info as to when?
SAFER grant, like a lot of other FEMA grants, are actually being put on hold, and we have not heard when, and once it gets posted, you got 30 days to apply, and as of right now, we're still waiting.
So nothing has been put up to say apply for the SAFER?
That is correct.
All right, and can you make sure that if it does go up, that we get alerted?
Yes, will.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, so just going to do a real, a real short announcement on Workers Memorial Day, and this is for, on April 28th, 1971, 54 years ago, the Occupational Safety and Health Act went into effect, promising every worker the right to a safe job. Every year on April 28th, communities and work sites around the world honor friends, family members, and colleagues who have been killed or injured on the job. In Michigan alone, an average of 147 workers have died on the job yearly over the past decade, according to data from the US Department of Labor. Nationally, a worker died every 99 minutes in the year 2024 from a work-related injury, according to data from the National Census of Fatal Occupational Injuries. It's appropriate to honor the memory of the courageous, dedicated members of Michigan's labor force who have been injured, disabled, or have died as a result of these workplace accidents. Recognition of the integrity of Michigan's workforce and its achievements on behalf of the economic growth of our state is essential. Workers want to provide for their families and contribute to their communities through honest work. They should not have to be subjected to dangerous conditions. I humbly would ask for a brief moment of silence up here in recognition of the solemn day that is Workers Memorial Day and the lives of Michiganders who have been changed forever due to a workplace injury or death. Thank you. All right. I'm hoping that everybody got this, District One Repair Program is going to go into effect this year, so you may see people come out and mark your sidewalks, so if you're in District One, and I think that's going to be in, that's in the south end, I thought I had the map in here, yeah, it'll be in the south end, between Eight and Nine Mile, between Greater Mac and the west city limits. So, Mom, yes, your house is going to be in it. Next up is the, I just want you to mark your calendars, Friday, July 11th, it's the Third Annual Scholarship Golf Outing, put on by the Optimist Club of St. Clair Shores. It's going to be at the St. Clair Shores Golf Club, there's a $5,000 hole-in-one opportunity, it's an 18-hole scramble with cart, $125 a person. If you're interested, let me give you a phone number, 586-530-4203, or you can go to SCS underscore Optimist Golf Outing at outlook.com and send us some information. Space is limited, generally it'll sell out, so we are still looking for golfers, but if you do have something that you want to donate, we have the opportunity to give out baskets and that kind of things, like at a gala, and so we would be excited to do that. In addition, there, there is a, a little goodie bag at the beginning that everybody gets, so if there's something that you as a business or as an individual you want to throw in that goodie bag, we need about 144 items to cover everybody, so. Again, Friday, July 11th, I think everybody liked the fact that it was on Friday for the last few years, so get yourself into a weekend right away. All right, we talked a lot about the library tonight, so let's see what's going on over there. All right, join the library on Tuesday, May 13th, for the Friends Annual Meeting at 6:30 PM. They're going to elect their 25, 26 board positions, following directly at 7:00 PM, they're going to have a guest speaker, Karen Detis, author of Detroit Style Pizza, Dough Town, I mentioned Dough Town.
Oh, that is so clever.
History. Join us for an informational chocolate tasting with Champagne Chocolates of Mount Clemens on May 15th at 6:30 PM, registration is required, begins May 1st, for this free 18 and up event. Advance master gardener Lori Smith from the St. Clair Shores Yardeners will give a presentation on growing vegetables in your backyard on April 28th at 7:00 PM. Participants will get their hands dirty planting some vegetable seeds to take home to their garden already started. Registration is started and can be completed online, in person, or by phone. And then Michigan poet laureate, Dr. Melba Joyce Boyd, in conversation with local poet and Wayne State University professor M.L. Liebler, will present at the library on May 5th at 6:30 PM. Registration is started, it can be done online, in person, or again, by phone. And I believe that might be it. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vitale.
Well, I'll have to ad lib a second here, Ron, you brought up Workers Memorial Day, you know, we actually just had an industrial accident in Dundee, Michigan.
Yeah.
A worker unfortunately crushed by a robot during a tryout. And that, that does happen, I mean, we, not to take anything away from police and fire, those are dangerous jobs, but industrial jobs are very dangerous too. And I personally worked with a very good friend of mine who caught a face full of coolant on a bad pipe joint that was 30 years old, gave way, luckily for him, that engine was not up to operating temperatures, so it wasn't as bad as it could have been, but there is, there is risk to that. Anyways, so I thank you for remembering that. If we could go to the slide presentation. Okay, I, I was, in a sense, given this by a resident who kept up on a lot of city happenings over the years, this is talking about St. Clair Shores water rates, and judging from the style of that print. style of that print, probably when Windows 95 was a brand-new idea. It's a nice little pamphlet. Can you go to the second page? And it talks about what is the cost of water that goes into back then. It's referring to Detroit Water Department. Where does the markup come into play? It explains our, our lost water costs, you know, the maintaining the infrastructure for the city, things like that. Why is the markup greater than other cities in the area? It explains in there that other cities are taking from general fund money. We traditionally haven't done that. As you can see, by the age of this document, that mindset goes back a long way. So, at the last council meeting, I did mention that Chesterfield Township with their water bills was including the press release from GLWA. We talked about doing something like that. I think this wouldn't be a bad idea either to really just explain that to residents, because probably one of the top five questions that as a councilperson I get asked, and I'm all for a better educated electorate. So, I think maybe we can do something a little more modern graphics, but the same, although I liked the little duck with the umbrellas, kinda cute. But I think we should give that same level of explanation, because it's been more than a generation, maybe since the last time we've done it. So, I'll leave this with you, Dustin. Next slide, please. I also want to mention that St. Paul Lutheran Church will be having their spring rummage and bake sale on Friday, May 2nd, Saturday, May 3rd. Always hear a lot of great things about that. Brings in a lot of money for the church to keep things running there. And if you didn't know where St. Paul's is at, it is just south of downtown on the, would be the west side of Greater Mac. One other thing that I'm also gonna be ad-libbing, because it came up tonight. So, the changes to the site plan for the proposed Panera now slash Panera Chipotle look vastly different than when they were presented to us. Do we need to mail those residents a second time for the change? Is that a requirement?
Ms. Pike, you can come up there. If we could get a mic, would it be great over there? Mr. Lent.
Mr. Baumgartner. No, we don't have to mail them a second time, and the reason for that is that the Assistant City Manager opined, and I'm talking about Mr. Haw, opined that because it was not a drive-through in specifically. It's not considered another special interest. I'd be happy to share that email.
That, you know, I'm not aware of, this may be a first in the city, that we have a drive-up window that can only be used with an app?
Right. I think it is.
Yeah. I don't even know any city that has that right now, but.
I believe there are other Chipotles that do.
You order at the window, you're not gonna be able to order at this window.
No.
Yeah, but we, we still have the net effect of cars potentially stacking. So, I mean, this is a, if we're not legally required, we're not legally required, but is that coming to the first planning meeting in May? Do you know the date that would be?
It would be the second Tuesday.
Oh, okay.
Is that right?
Yes.
So, second and fourth Tuesdays are planning commission, 13th.
Okay. So, I guess if you're watching at home and live in the affected area, there's a change to that site plan coming, and I'm mentioning it. There's, there's press here in the room. It might be a good little blurb, but yeah, because that's a substantially different site plan than what we were shown. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all I had for comments.
Thank you. Ms. Burgess.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor. I got just a few little announcements. First one coming up is Thursday, May 1st, is our Parade Committee's annual fundraising dinner. It's gonna be at the Bruce Post from 4:00 to 8:00 PM, and the wristbands are on sale right now at the Civic Center, and they are 40, what was it again? Sorry.
20.
Do you remember the price?
20.
20. Okay, so, 20 bucks. So, again, it is May 1st from 4:00 to 8:00 PM at the Bruce Post, and wristbands on sale right now at the Civic Center. Also, want to just mention that I wasn't here for the last city council meeting, because I had my annual Crisis Club Sports Night. That was a huge success, and I want to thank Ron and Dave for scooting out of here and coming over there and supporting us, and I really do appreciate it. It was one of the best ones that we've had, biggest attendance since, since before COVID, and our number one, we beat all numbers as far as the fundraising. So, I was really excited about that. Thank you, guys, for allowing me to be there that night. Also, want to thank all the fish fry people. We had such a great Lenten season with our fish fries, and just, I know that St. Isaac Jokes was named number one in McComb County, and, and of course, our VFW, those are the ones that I attended. I know St. Margaret's had some and some other people did, but just want to thank all those places for supplying that and having that for us is great. Also, wanted to bring up the Waterfront Environmental Committee. We just had our Earth Day, our first Earth Day Fun Day this Sunday. It was right after, or Saturday, I'm sorry. It was right after the Easter Egg Hunt, and I just want to thank everybody who came out for that as well. And the Waterfront Environmental Committee's annual cleanup, the nautical cleanup, is going to be May 18th. It starts out at the Jefferson Yacht Club. We'll all be meeting up there, and we would love to be able to have people come to that, bring your kids. Last year, we had so many kids that were helping with the cleanup, and it was just amazing to get these school-aged kids coming out to help out. But it is, like I said, on May 18th. We are also looking for sponsors. So, if you are somebody that is in a restaurant business or food business, and you would like to donate breakfast, or someone was willing to donate lunch, that would be amazing. And we also have, let's see, sorry about this. We have sponsorship levels. We have the beacon level, which is $500, and that beacon level gets you on the T-shirts that will be going out that day, and you also get a year-round mention on our website as well as a Facebook posting about the environmental cleanup, the coastal cleanup. And then we also have a sailor tier, which is 350, and our perch tier, which is 200. You can get all of this information on our Facebook page, which is the St. Clair Shores Waterfront Environmental. And we're also looking, like I said, for food sponsorships and any monetary donations as well. It all goes through Eventbrite, so if you want to attend, just get on Eventbrite. Gives you all the information on that. Also, our Cool City Wine on the Water is going to be happening on May 31st. It's a Saturday. This will be our second Wine on the Water by Cool City. We're real excited about it, because we're actually going even beyond what we did last year. We had 200 people that came out last year, and it was an amazing event. We got such positive feedback on it. This year, the price did go up just slightly to $40, but that will include wine sampling, so you can sample as many wines as you like, two free pours, a charcuterie box, dessert, late-night pizza party, live DJ and photo booth, strolling art exhibit, that's new this year as well, and you're gonna walk away with a free gift. Additionally, they'll have more wine pours, craft cocktails, and beer available for extra purchase. Tickets have to be purchased in advance, and they are at the Civic Arena, and that again is $40. It's May 31st, Saturday, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. And one last thing I want to mention is we did hear of the passing of Pope Francis today, and so I just wanna just put out that there today and pray for our Catholic Church, and pray that a new pope is found soon, elected soon, and that it will be one that will really move us forward. And that's it for me.
Very nice. Thank you. Mr. Rabello.
Thank you, Mayor. They took my name out of the running, by the way, for that position. The Cool Cities Committee, I originally wanted to call it Smoke on the Water, but they would not allow cigars. Anyways, okay. And let's talk a little bit about the parade as far as fundraising. I still have that $100 board out there. We filled one up, and I actually just turned it about $1,300 today, so keep those donations coming. It helps fund this year's parade, as well as future parades. It's called the $100 or More Board, a nifty thing that myself and Mayor Wabi came up with. I don't know, might be a decade ago now, but it's been working out good. Contact me at 586-489-8117, and we can take care of things. I wanted to sort of talk about also, with the construction going on on Jefferson Avenue, two things. We, there's another thing, I think Mayor and myself came up with a few years back, and those wires are still hanging over that road. And I don't know, and they're, they're sort of, were wires made for banners that would cross Jefferson Avenue in two spots on the north and south side. So, I don't know if that's something, maybe we can get going again while the construction's going on. I thought that it brought attention to the area.
I have talked to Mr. Lent about that, and we'll have him investigate it again. I don't disagree. I think they had it maybe during Restaurant Week. I don't remember what we used them for, but certainly a few events in the Nautical Mile area.
Yeah, one of them, yeah, it was Restaurant Weeks. I think we even used it for the nautical coast cleanup.
Sure.
And there was other things.
Sure, sure.
I just thought that was, they were handy.
Yeah, well, have Mr. Lent. I think he's fond of it.
All right. He is?
I'm not sure, but.
Okay. I don't think he is. Okay. And maybe if we get down there, if we're heading east on Nine Mile Road, there seems to be a little bit of confusion as far as where cars are making their left turns and stuff, and it's, it's a little funny in there. So, I don't know if we can look at putting some type of blinking, well, yellow.
I don't, I don't think, that is not, we can't do that, or the contractor can't. You're me, you mean going north on Jefferson at Nine Mile. Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Because you can't make a left.
It's a little confusion, yeah.
I don't disagree, but we have now two signs up there, and it says no left turn. We have a sign up there that's, before that says no left turn at Nine Mile Road. We've put the signs there. I don't think we can get, I'm just being honest. I don't think we can get rid of the confusion, nor can the contractor legally put up blinking lights. That's not, that's not able, we're not under their authority, and I don't think the county would put it under their, allow that any, either. So, I do understand your concerns, and you are correct. I don't know how much more we can do for that area. Okay.
Thank you. And a couple of other things going on. We had a little fun at the Blossom Heath Park. Rob Spinozola, Parks Rec Director, great job. Lots of kids running around in there. Henry Bowman's not here, but, oh my gosh, there was a lot of kids running around. And Chris, you said there was some checking going on down there. Who was getting bumped out of the way sometimes? Was it, oh, no, you said Geo might have.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why I didn't go.
Yeah, good move. I had, I have a daughter, and she was, went down that road with that. I had to go and get her. And you're, you're an effort, Logan.
Logan, yeah.
He did good out there.
He got a lot.
Restaurant Week. On the Nautical Mile, there's a Restaurant Week going on. It's April 21st through April 27th. We are getting some attention down there. Residents of St. Clair Shores are, I think, responding. They realize that that construction sort of plays havoc on some of their business. So, it's great that the business people are counting on the city of St. Clair Shores, the residents and beyond to come down there and support them and patronize them. And we're gonna have a special, starting Thursday, this Thursday through Saturday, from 7:00 to 11 o'clock, there is the trolley making its comeback on the Nautical Mile Restaurant Week. And that trolley used to be a lot of fun, so it'll be interesting to see what happens with that. And the last few weeks I've been doing this, trying to patronize with the construction on Jefferson, some of the restaurants, they're sort of on the list of, you know, that are getting affected the most. We've done Leo's Coney Island. We, we have people come out, you know, open invitation to all. Leo's Coney Island, Nautical Deli, Fishbones, we did. And tomorrow, Tuesday, 5:30, we're gonna be doing Zeps. So, everybody who's hearing this, listening, is invited to Zeps at 5:30 tomorrow to try to patronize them and try to give them a little bit extra business in the tough times of construction, which will be going on. And last thing I wanted to do is give a Muscat Award to Virginia from Trader Tides. If you're out there listening, I know you were talking about this, and you're doing, you're doing a wonderful, wonderful job promoting the Nautical Mile in St. Clair Shores. So, keep up the great work. It makes a difference. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Russey.
Thank you. Well, sorry. First off, thanks to the Fire Union for their work at the Easter Egg Hunt on Saturday up at Blossom Heath. It's a lot of work, and they, they're up there volunteering. They provide all the candy. They partnered with the Lake Shore High School students to stuff the can, the eggs, all the candy and the eggs. It's a huge undertaking. And it is over in a couple of minutes after the, the kids collect the eggs very quickly. It's called a hunt, but it's more of a, of a gather, I guess, because there's not a lot of hunting going on. But it's crazy, all the hundreds of kids out there having a lot of fun, a lot of smiles. I remember, this is a longstanding tradition. I remember doing this when I was little. It was at the tennis courts before Wabi Park was built. They used to be out there. So, I remember that, and it's fun now seeing it from this perspective. I've been, I've helped out in different ways over the years, just because it used to be hell on Easter. I didn't really have a lot going on on Easter. I didn't have any kids or anything, so it was something to do, and I used to have fun doing that. Now I have a little nephew who, and they have events on Saturday the day before, so I can take him out now, and he was helping out. This was the first year he was able to volunteer and actually help put the eggs out. So, he got really into the idea of helping out, then he scoops them up and was very excited for all the little tootsie rolls inside. So, thanks for the efforts. Long, longstanding tradition, the city of the Fire Union for keeping this going and doing all the work and hauling all the eggs. It's a, maybe the new truck will help out now. It's a, it's a big undertaking for a few minutes, but it definitely will be memories that these kids carry with them for a while. Like, I still remember participating as a kid. So, thanks to the members of the Fire Union for that. And just one announcement, the St. Clair Shores Community Chorus, under the direction of Ms. Cynthia Ort, is proudly presenting their spring concert called Let's Go to the Movies, Sunday, May 4th. Their scholarship performance starting at 2:45, local students who have competed and won the scholarships. Not only is this a group of people in the city or affiliated with this, around the city, who get together and have fun and promote the arts and everything, but they also help local students by sponsoring, raising money and sponsoring these scholarships. So, they do a lot of good work in the community. The main show's at 3:00 PM. It's at Lake Shore High School Auditorium on 13 Mile. Again, this is Sunday, May 4th. The theme is Let's Go to the Movies, so it will feature songs from different movies like Footloose, Hairspray, Barbie, Les Mis, Mamma Mia, and more. If you're interested in tickets, you can call 586-482-6056, or go to scscommunitychorus.org, their website. Pre-sale tickets are $20. They also will be sold at the door for $22. Children four to 12, $10, and children three and under are free. So, again, this is Let's Go to the Movies, the St. Clair Shores Community Chorus, over at the Lake Shore High School Auditorium, Sunday, May 4th, starting at 2:45, because you'll want to be there to see the local students perform first, before they get into the main program, which starts at 3:00 PM.
She's saying Mamma Mia.
Mamma Mia is one of them. Dave will be there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Karen.
Thank you. First start thanking the, the yardners group of St. Clair Shores. They had a great presentation here. That was actually here in council chambers. We had like 50 to 60 people here.
Wow.
One night last week. The gentleman was here to talk about how to create butterfly gardens and that, in terms of plant selection, what's needed, what different types of plants are needed, and all sorts of care that he goes in to use on his property. Started in Started in, down in Westland on his own property, and then his passion when he retired took over and they bought a big plot of land out, out in the country. And basically, he's just kind of transforming it into one big, large butterfly garden all over the place. But I think the great thing here is we prepared for the library being shut down, come the construction. This is a presentation space for that, worked out really well, especially for the number of people. I know 50 to 60 people within the current room over in the library would be quite cramped and that. So, so I think it's great to utilize this space. It doesn't get utilized that much, except for here in voting and occasional blood drive. Outside of that, it's basically not used space. So I think it worked out really well. The audiovisual worked out well, even with an outside presenter. So it was great for them to utilize it and I thank the library staff for coordinating it with the Yardners to make the space available. So hopefully we'll have more presentations like that in the future, hosted by libraries. Very, very informational way presented. Next, I did see that Brian's out this week, but over lake, next to St. Joan, typically every year, we've got to do major pothole repairs because the, the concrete at the joints is basically very deteriorated. And they do have normally a food truck festival, third week, third weekend of May. And so normally, we were out there making sure those are filled prior to that. But there are some very large ones that opened up with the recent rain and that. So that needs to get addressed. It'll take a lot of cold patches to fill that up. And I don't know, Denise, maybe that might be something for Mike to look at of not doing full section replacements, but like, similar to how we did with Harper, where at the joints, we took out the joint and just replaced that. To evaluate, maybe that might be possible to do a quicker, shorter repair, rather than just filling in cold patches. Because right now, the, some of the puddles are like nine inches deep and that, so they're very significant. Fortunately, it's in the middle of the road, so they don't get hit as much, but it's definitely going to be an issue going forward. Next, a few weeks ago, myself, Denise, Rob, met with the pier contractor, as well as their cement contractor, I brought up before, about the flaking of the concrete. It got, it was poured two and a half years ago, so we're beyond any initial warranty on it. They believe it is due to salt coming in contact. We don't think that much salt was ever used out there, but where the concrete was flaking away at, it's a little hard to dispute without us having a record of when we were salting out there, because the other concrete where salt never would be, up on the curb, walkway, that's all fine. The concrete we're dealing with is just all around the curb stops. So it could be runoff from the road that caused it to flake. But the concrete contractor did agree, they are going to put a sealant on it to prevent future deterioration. It's going to take a few hours of work. They're waiting for one good, predictable 70-degree day. So the, so one day in May, the pier may be shut down in order to do that. So they'll be coordinating with Rob to make sure that that happens. So just wanted to give everyone an update on that.
Thank you.
And next, Matt, wanted to bring up a few slides here. So this Friday, we have our Arbor Day celebration over in Bryce Park, kicking off at 9:00 a.m. We are looking for volunteers to help plant trees all through the park and especially going to be thankful to Lake Shore, the National Honor Society students again, after they filled all those eggs with candy, they're not done. They've got 33 students signed up to kind of come out to help us plant trees out in Bryce Park and add to the arboretum. And if you wanted to go to the next slide there. So we have 26 new trees, new locations to plant. We've got eight replacement trees we're going to be planting that day. So there'll be a lot of tree planting down, so it's great that we've got all the students to help out. But we are looking for volunteers that have experience doing the tree planting before, so we can kind of partner all up with the students to kind of make the whole project go a bit quicker. And we'll have instructions in terms of step-by-step to make sure everything's being followed, available on Friday. But, so that is Friday, this Friday, 9:00 a.m. at Bryce Park to do the tree planting, to add to the arboretum, to celebrate Arbor Day here in St. Clair Shores. Next, so we got two new plaques that are, markers are going to be dedicated by the Historical Commission, one, May 1st, that we're doing during the parade spaghetti dinner. So that'll be at 6:00 p.m. at the VFW. Bruce Post will be dedicating that one over there at Jefferson Avenue and Marty Road. And then later in May, on Monday, May 12th, Bon Marino Bakery over on Greater Mac is getting their historical marker.
Masonic.
Yeah, I think you said martyr.
Greater Mac.
Continue.
Okay.
Greater Mac.
Yep. Over on Greater Mac, near St. Joan of Arc Church. And that'll be at 6:30 on Monday, May 12th. And this is the 13th and 14th historical marker that the Historical Commission has created, going back to when we started this program back in 2015 and that. So they are basically getting them out, one or two every year and that. So it's a, a lot of work goes in to the research to make sure everything's accurate. And greatly appreciate staff. I know building maintenance was out installing the post for the Bon Marino one because they had to go into the cement, because they don't have any flower beds or anything that they typically go in. And DPW will be installing the one over at VFW here before May 1st. So greatly appreciate staff helping out with those. And next, shout out to State Representative Lisa St. Germain. She introduced a bill last week in the House to basically help with cleanup efforts along the lake. Currently, you're not allowed to use any type of heavy equipment, machinery equipment, to pull material out of lake, which is why when we do the waterfront cleanup, we're using shovels and rakes and that. We can't use anything motorized in the water because anything like that requires a permit from Eggle in order to do that. And it's typically a dredging permit, which is very expensive to get. So she introduced legislation that to open that up, to basically allow more mechanized equipment that could be used. You know, it's really targeting some of the muck that can get caught in some of the areas where the water doesn't flow through. But this would also be, you know, we get, you know, big seaweed bundles in our canals and that, that that requires dredging material and equipment to pull out because nothing else is being allowed. You can't rake seaweed out of the, out of canal. So hopefully, this goes, moves ahead to allow for more solutions that can be used to clean up the lake going forward without having to go through the, a costly dredging permit and that. And we know how, you know, we have to pay for that dredging ourselves for our Marinas and for Alexander, so we know how expensive that can be. To have a homeowner have to go through that, because I know there's a homeowner on social media asking that question just last week of, they couldn't get a dredger out to clean up their property. They're new to the area and we're very surprised they couldn't get anything because of the regulations that are in place. So hopefully, this bill goes through, that she can get support from her colleagues and also in the Senate, to just allow more of these solutions, be able to use to clean up our lake going forward. I think the last one, little personal point of pride here. My niece Sarah Silver has her fourth book out. This is the third one in her Fractured Fae series. And basically, this is a, you take a bunch of fantasy characters, throw in a bit of a murder mystery, and you have her fractured face fantasy novel series. And so this is her book three, and it is called Pixie Dusted, and it just came out last week. So Dave, are you ready for this? I know you, you love these descriptions that my niece comes up with. Chessa Moon and Gwendolyn Evanshine started CNF Investigations with a clear objective, pursue justice for the countless fae who've been let down by the system. Unfortunately, the lines of secession and a botched insurrection tore Gwen away, leaving Chessa to press on without her partner. With help from Norman A., Norman, a rehabilitated criminal wizard, and Cross-Eyed Quincy, a disreputable half-ogre, CNF scrouches for business crippled by its connection to the sealy throne, until Xander Aster is pushed through the front door. Xander's brother Mandrake was murdered and the teenage pixie doesn't believe the story the cops are selling. When the case leads to Avalon, the seat of the sealy power, Chessa must determine who is trustworthy before the magic inside consumes her and a new evil is let loose upon the world. So my niece has a very creative mind in terms of combining all sorts of fancy characters with her murder mysteries, and they're very entertaining books to read. So you can check that out. Like I said, it came out last, just last week through Amazon. So.
Very good.
Congrats to her on our, continuing her novel career.
Excellent.
Did she use you for the cover model of the book?
Actually.
He'd been on skis.
Actually, that does look a li, the forehead does look a little like her husband, Alex. The pixie there, that definitely is, looks a lot like my niece Sarah. So she might, took a little self.
It has it.
Self portrait therefore.
All righty, thank you. Item 10, the city manager's report. No report. Item 11 is audience participation, which is a five-minute time limit. Views, opinions expressed under audience participation are those of the individual citizen only, do not necessarily represent the views, opinions of the mayor, the city council, administration of city St. Clair Shores. Anyone like to speak? Yes, sir? Yes, ma'am? Come on up. We just need you to say your name and the city you reside in and sign in first, and then we'll have you speak. Just sign in after him and then we'll get you right up there. Thank you.
Good evening. Just a quick offhand. Got my sidewalk poured about a year and a half ago.
By us?
Yeah, by Italia Brothers.
Okay.
Came to city before winter came. It's spalding so bad now, it's not even funny. It's cracking all up and everything. I took a picture, I sent it to Julie. Julie said she was going to call Hennessy, have them come out and look at it. That was like a month ago.
Okay.
Been going back and forth. Nobody's come out and looked at it.
All right.
It's getting worse and worse. And I...
We'll take a look at it. You put your, you put your address there?
Yes, I did.
I'll come out and look at it.
Okay. And I took pictures, I don't know if you want to see it or anything, but yeah, I took pictures and tried to send it up you, but it files too big.
Okay, we'll grab your address and we'll come by.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, you can sign in fir, ma'am, you can sign in later and talk first, okay?
Hi, Molly Donaldson. I live over on Briar Court. I'm here again about the cats. I'm here on behalf of the neighborhood, Briar Court and Rose Briar. I'm sad to say that we are exactly in the same place we were six months ago. This is my third time now coming here, so that's six hours I can never get back again, although I enjoy this, some of it. It's, I'm like, come on. So it's been a good five months or so. We're not seeing anything different. There are still more cats.
Okay.
Than ever. She still has a lot of cat homes in the backyard. We're just not seeing anything, so we're asking again.
More help.
Yep. So I'm hopeful this, this third last time. I prefer watching this on video. So we're just, again, please, please, please do something.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is LaJean Maxwell. I live on Elizabeth Street in St. Clair Shores.
Good evening.
I have this huge tree in my yard that's causing me great grief. I think I've had my drains jetted twice in the last, since I've been here five.
And it's on the easement, I presume?
Yeah, it's yours.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
And so all the sidewalks are...
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So why would that be my responsibility? I know it's in your city ordinance, but if it's your easement or your tree, it's going to cause me more grief, because I have to have it jetted tomorrow. That's $1,300. Just had it snaked today, that's another $250. I've done this about three times and I've been here five years.
Okay. Well, Mr. Lent?
Say, set up, come, come and see me after this and I'll set up in a meeting.
I couldn't hear you.
Come see me after this and then I'll set up a meeting and you can come see me in my office.
Do you want me to have a seat and just wait through?
Yeah, we're almost done.
Anyone else, before we go to Mayor's comments? No one else? Just a quick one from me is this Sunday's the Hall of Fame, St. Clair Shores Athletic Hall of Fame. We've had some great inductees over, over the years. We got four of them here and a football team. Again, it'll be this Sunday at the Bearster Gardens there on Harper, Nine and a Half Mile Road. Starts off at 1:00. Inductees are Don Young, Dave DeVita, Matt Trombley, Don Fowler, and actually, the Lake Shore football teams from '75, '76, '76, '77, '77, '78, just great football teams at, during those years at Lake Shore High School. So come out and enjoy it. We want to honor these people. It's always been a great time during the Hall of Fame. So again, this Sunday, 1:00 at the Bearster Gardens there on Harper Avenue, the St. Clair Shores Hall of Fame luncheon there that will induct four individuals and a big football team at Lake Shore High School through '75 through '78. And with that, we'll need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Support.
By Mr. Karen, supported by Ms. Rusi, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?